As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order, ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two minor adjustments and one clarification. We'd like to add under 11A, a closed session to discuss entering into a formal contract to purchase real property in accordance with NCGS 143-318-11A5. I believe that is in addition to the others that are previously noted. And then under item, we'd like to add item 5E, thank you to council from Bill Simpson, our water reclamation superintendent. And then last, just a quick clarification, under public hearings, items 6D, the developer has requested a continuance of that item to the December 4th meeting, so we will not be hearing that or continuing that discussion this evening. So I just want to make sure that's clarified in case there's anybody that was waiting for that item.
So the Summer Glen conditional rezoning with the master plan will not be heard. It will be continued until December 4th, is that right?
Yes, that is required, that was the request.
Okay, at the developer's request. Gotcha, okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
A move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next on our introductions and special presentation, I'm going to ask Colonel Jerry Berry to please come up to the front podium, and I'm going to join you there very shortly. Not going to drop it. It is a, it was an extreme pleasure to have you come and to speak at the Clayton Center today, and thank you so much for what you stand for. You know, that's powerful. So I don't really think I need to elaborate much more than that, other than to say, I'd like to present this to you, and it says, Town of Clayton Veterans Appreciation Award, Colonel Jerry Berry, retired, United States Marine Corps. Thank you for your service to our country and to the town of Clayton, presented by Mayor Jody McLeod and the town council on November 6th, 2023.
Can I come get it before you get too fond of it there? Wow, thank you. Thank you, everybody. This is magnificent. Thank you. Where are we getting this from?
Unexpected and fantastic. Thank you all very much.
Michael, thank you. I'm taking this home.
You can leave now?
Yes. Thank you. Up next is the Operation Green Light for Veterans proclamation. Town of Clayton proclamation honoring green light for veterans, whereas the residents of the town of Clayton have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selfishly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the town of Clayton seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help, excuse me, follow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health disability compensation benefits each year, whereas the town of Clayton appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel, believes specific recommendations should be granted, and whereas Town of Clayton hereby declares November 6 through 12, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and the sacrifice of our men and women in uniform, transitioning from after service, therefore, be it further resolved, that in remembrance of Operation Green Light, the Town of Clayton encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence proclaimed this sixth day of November 2023 while in regular session. And on behalf of the Town of Clayton and this town council, we wish to express our sincerest appreciation to all of those who have served our country so well, both yesterday, today, and moving forward. Just so everyone knows, there are green lights out in the lobby of the Clayton Center, and we ask that you take one home and plug it in maybe by your front porch or your place of business to help us honor this whole week all of our veterans. Let's have a nice round of applause for them. Up next is the National Apprenticeship Week proclamation. For us to maintain and enhance the town, Town Clayton, the Town of Clayton's economic competitiveness, our town needs a well-educated, diverse, and talented workforce, and whereas some employers attribute their difficulty in finding qualified workers to the lack of relevant education, technical skills, and durable skills among applicants, and whereas as a growing number of individuals, particularly high school and community college students, are turning to apprenticeships to help them start their chosen careers, whereas employers around the state in partnership with Apprenticeship NC have created apprenticeship programs to help develop a talented workforce for their industry, and whereas last year 13,377 individuals and 1,698 employers across North Carolina were served by apprenticeship programs in fields like clean energy, healthcare, and manufacturing, whereas the Town of Clayton is committed to connecting job seekers, which ensures that people in our town have a relevant and effective workforce development system that develops skilled talent to meet the current and future needs of the workers and businesses. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, I, Mayor McLeod, hereby proclaim November 13th through the 19th, 2023, National Apprenticeship Week, proclaim this sixth day of November, 2023. Let's have a nice round of applause for all of our apprentice. They are here. That's awesome.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, rich staff. This, I'm James Blaylock, maintenance superintendent and interim water reclamation superintendent for the town of Clayton. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Alona Williams. She is our apprentice from the National Carolina Rural Water Association. She's been with us, make sure you can hear me, since June of last year. She's been a very good asset to our treatment plant staff. They go over a lot of stuff, just in that last year, she's had 960 hours of quality control training, 815 hours of system operation and maintenance, and then, you know, about 400 hours between tools, equipment, vehicles, logistic reports, and being able to supervise stuff. She's taken initiative in our lab. As you know, we're kind of short-staffed. She holds a collections one and a grade one biological, so I'm glad she's here and I'm glad y'all are recognizing her.
Me too, and I want to get her picture made. All right, we're good. Up next is the GIS Day proclamation. Town of Clayton proclamation, GIS Day. Whereas the Town of Clayton recognizes that an understanding use and application of technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the town. And whereas geographic information systems, GIS technology, allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intellectually respond, and whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its fullest potential. Whereas the Town of Clayton acknowledges those who have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens, and whereas to recognize and support the efforts of nonprofits who work on activities to improve conservation, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world, and whereas the Town of Clayton is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, I, Mayor McLeod, hereby proclaim November 16th, 2023, GIS Day, proclaim to the sixth day of November, 2023. I don't know what we would do without our GIS crew. Please join me down front. All right, and up next, I will give the floor to Bill Simpson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to take a minute and, as your recently retired water reclamation superintendent, say thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. The support you guys have shown, shown myself, the opportunities you've given, working with the staff that you have that's helped lift me up in the position, I just wanted to take, say thank you.
Well, let us return the favor by saying thank you for your many contributions to the town of Clayton. We wish we had 100 more people just like you.
I don't know.
We really do.
But, but again, thank you.
Yes, Bill, thank you. All right, up next under public hearing, the first item is 2023-92-ANX 2311, Highway 42, contiguous annexation.
It works. Thank you, Mayor, town council. The first item that I have, excuse me, here for you, is a request for annexation of 2311 NC Highway 42, item 2023-92-ANX. The applicant, Spring Branch Plaza LLC, is seeking annexation of an approximately 1.34 acre parcel that is contiguous with the Town of Clayton town limits and with the Town of Clayton extraterrestrial jurisdiction. The petition to annex was adequately noticed with signage at the property as well as being noticed in the John Stonian on October 11th, 2023. Here's the site location designated with a star with the boundary of the Town of Clayton ETJ in black. Here's an aerial view of the subject parcel. And here is the 2045 future land use map showing the subject parcel within the red circle, which is designated as higher density residential. Staff is here for any questions, of course, and a representative for the applicant is here as well.
All right, any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Thompson.
The only question I have is, I want to make sure that when we do this, that from a GIS perspective, the roadway is included in this? I know we've had a problem in the past with annexing things and we don't take the road in front of it, so whenever, however this shakes out, you know, I don't want us to have those gaps where drive out 42 and you leave the city and come in the city and all that, as long as the road is included as a part of the appropriate GIS layer when we do this, I'm comfortable with.
We did explore that option with all of the parcels for our recent annexations. I'd have to ask Bruce if we confirmed that the roadway was included in this. Do you recall?
To best of our knowledge, that it is, what's included is what was available, and there's a legal description for the parcel itself that is recorded with the John Stonian County deeds, pressure deeds.
No, anyone else? All right, if not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their decision.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2023-10-07.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval and adoption of the ordinance. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, up next is 2023-93-ANX 26, 2364 NC Highway 42, non-contiguous annexation.
Thank you. This request is for the annexation of 2364 NC Highway 42. Again, item 2023-93-ANX. This will look familiar as it's an adjacent parcel to the property that we just annexed or that you moved to annex. The applicant, the same as the previous, is Spring Branch Plaza LLC. They're seeking annexation of an approximately eight tenths of an acre parcel that is non-contiguous with the Town of Clayton town limits. At the time of application, it's also within the Town of Clayton extraterrestrial jurisdiction. The petition to annex was adequately noticed with signage at the property as well as being noticed in the John Stonian on October 11th. There's the site location and an aerial view of the property. And they're on the future land use map again as high density residential. And I'm, of course, here for any questions as well as a representative for the property.
Okay, any questions for staff? All right, no questions for staff, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their decision. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, may we adopt ordinance 2023-10-06?
Second.
We got a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance 2023-10-06. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next under public hearing is 2023-96-ANX ETM Junior Property LLC, non-contiguous annexation.
Thank you. The final item that I have here is another request for annexation, 2023-96-ANX ETM Junior Property LLC. The applicant is seeking the annexation of an approximately 9.8 acre parcel located, or parcels located at 7531 and 7581 US Highway 70 business that is non-contiguous to the Town of Clayton town limits. It is within the Town of Clayton extraterrestrial jurisdiction. The petition to annex was adequately noticed with signage at the property as well as being noticed in the John Stonian on October 11th. Here's the site location with the star designated in the area, an aerial view of the property, and the future land use map showing that this area is designated as an employment center. Staff is here for any questions as well as a representative for the property.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? All right, no questions for staff, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor, board, my name is John Scarpa, and I am a resident of the town. The only question I have at this point is, what is the purpose that the applicant is making this application for? Is it to maintain it in its current state, or are they planning to make a, an application for some kind of commercial or non-commercial development?
So I could be speaking out of turn, but I believe they're just asking to be annexed, and annexation would not be based on what their potential use for the property is, it's just a request to be annexed into the town of Clayton.
Yeah.
But if I stay incorrect, my attorney can let us know.
That's the only item before you tonight.
Right. So we don't know why they want to be annexed? What advantages to the Town of Clayton to annex property that we don't know why they're asking to be annexed?
Because regardless of whatever is done with that property, it would still be considered tax revenue earning for the Town of Clayton if it's located in the city limits.
If they're willing to make, pay more taxes, I say vote for it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, no one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion.
All right, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-10-05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, the next item is 2022-125-CZM, Summer Glen conditional zoning with master plan, and we've already been informed at the beginning of the meeting that we're going to ask for a motion to continue to the December 4th, 2023 meeting.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, so the council may make a motion to continue.
They'll entertain a motion. Ms. Archer.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue item 2022-125-CZM to the December 20, December 4th, 2023 meeting.
All right, we have a motion to continue this till the December 4th, 2023 meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We'll also need a motion for that adoption of the wastewater resolution to continue that as well. Ms. Archer.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to continue adoption of wastewater resolution 2023-70 to the December 4th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue to the December 4th, 2023, adoption of the wastewater resolution 2023-70. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next under new business is the wastewater. Up next under new business is the wastewater regionalization resolution.
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution in support of continuing discussions that have been going on for several months now. A few of our council members have been representing the overall board at those meetings that once a month approximately, there's been a meeting of elected officials from each of the municipalities as well as the county itself here in Johnston County to kind of discuss the framework of a regionalization partnership or authority that could be formed potentially in the future to be able to take care of the water and wastewater needs throughout our region. This basically is a good faith notice to the rest of the group stating that we are willing to have be an active participant in those discussions moving forward, looking to see if there is some opportunities for not only cost savings for our overall rate payers, but also just a better quality of and level of service. So what this does is it sets up Central Pines Regional Council of Governments formerly TJ cog or Triangle J Council of Governments as the, I guess, management body of the discussions as well as sets council member Casey and Mr. Sims as your representatives on that group. So if you have any questions, please let us know, but right now it's still in the kind of infancy and backfinding mission, backfinding status.
Any questions or comments for staff? I think we're in good shape with those who we appointed to represent us on this.
I do have one minor, just looking at the resolution while we're sitting here. The last now therefore be resolved should say the town of Clayton, not Johnston County. That's on me. I missed that one, so I apologize. So that's the one minor edit that we can make prior to, prior to the vote.
All right. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, move we approve resolution 2023-81 with the edit suggested by the manager.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of resolution 2023-81. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries. Now we'll jump into staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Couple of quick announcements, but before I get to that, I did just want to say to give a chance while Bill was at the mic, but I just wanted to thank Bill for his years of service here with the town. Many of your members, a few years ago, James Warren, who was the longtime operator of our Little Creek facility retired. Bill fortunately had been with the town for several years at that point and was clearly prepared to take over what was a daunting task of keeping a facility that was originally built in the 60s and upgraded in the 90s running for us while we wait Sam's branch to be completed. We appreciate all Bill's hard work here for the town the last several years and just again, for me personally, making that transition, I know it was difficult for all of us, but I appreciate you leading us through the last two years and wish you well in retirement. Thank you very much for your service.
Absolutely.
I'll also, before I get to the couple of announcements, I did just want to recognize and thank the overall community and several municipalities, other utilities, other industry group folks that have reached out expressing condolences of the passing of Byron Pullman last month, October 25th. Byron passed away somewhat unexpectedly in short notice after an illness. And you know, Byron was a rock here for the town of Clayton, almost 26 years. He was just a few weeks shy of 26 years of service here with the town of Clayton. But overall to the water and sewer industry and the public service in the town of, excuse me, in the state of North Carolina, much more than that. And yeah, he's left a big void for us, but luckily we've had some great folks on the water resources side and our engineering folks step up to try to manage us through these times. But I did just want to say thank you to many of our regional partners that that reached out and have offered help to help us bridge that gap. And we certainly continue to keep the Pullman family in our, in our thoughts and our prayers as they're, they're working through this, this tough time. Last, just a couple of quick announcements. Everybody, election day is tomorrow, so hope everybody's got that date on their calendar circled. I did just want to remind everybody here on the council as well as the staff that are involved that we have our fall retreat, one day retreat on Thursday, this coming Thursday. Did also want to remind everybody that we are closed this Friday in observance of Veterans Day. And just a quick heads up for next Friday is our employee holiday luncheon, which hopefully we'll be able to see you all at as well as Bill and some others. The town offices will be closed from 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM so that our, all of our staff can, can be participate in that. So I just did want to get that out there. We'll certainly notice that and put it out on social media so everybody is aware, but did want to get that out there as well. And that's it for me this evening. Yes, that'll be out at the community center.
All right. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? I'll now open the floor for informal discussion or public comment. Anyone wish to speak? No one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick comments on, first of all, just want to thank the chamber, Tom Click, Harvest Festival, which again was a magnificent one, especially on the 10 chief, our police chief and party for just making, making sure that everything was smooth and safe out there. So we're actually doing everything, so really appreciative for another successful Harvest Festival. Also want to personally thank our town manager for the Veterans Day celebration that we had today. You and I kind of talked it out and it ended up working out, and especially we give a shout out to Nathaniel for everybody coming together and making a good Veterans Day celebration.
And I'm hoping that we can expand that. You know, we kind of hit a lull with COVID and now that we are more free and clear of that, I would love to see this get taken to another whole level. And I think with really good planning that we can totally make that happen because it was, it was a great day. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson?
I just was going to say the same thing Mr. Sims did about the Harvest Festival. I would, I'd like to at some point see if Dana or somebody from the chamber has any numbers, you know, maybe provide a report to us on the benefit of what the Harvest Fest brought to Clayton. You know, is there, is there any estimation on attendance? Because I tell you, it was huge and to me it looked like a record crowd and just people as far as you could see, and it looked like it was a very well planned day. And I think the chamber did a great job coordinating with town staff and we, there were a lot of key players that, that put that together, but it off the cuff, like it went off without a hitch and you know, on the backside of things, I'm sure that the chamber and some of our staff see the hitches, but we don't. The public that went and enjoyed the Harvest Fest, they saw a flawless event and that means a lot. Thank you.
Yeah. It was outstanding.
I just want to tag on that too, not only at the Harvest Festival, but the Clayton High School football game that night versus Cleveland. Unfortunately, the comments lost, but I appreciate the, the police chief and the, the police staff that were out there because that was, I would say, I've been to a lot of football games and that was probably the, the largest record attendance of any game ever in the town of Clayton. So I want to thank you that and also want to just, so we have a Boy Scout in the audience. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Appreciate it's a worthy service organization. I was a Boy Scout, Eagle Scout, so thank you for being here.
Awesome. Anybody else? All right. I just want to also thank our partners at the Clayton Chamber Commerce for an exceptional Harvest Festival and to my staff, fire and police and all of them really. It's just, it's all of them, takes, it takes all of them to, to pull that off. I have no idea what the numbers were and, but this is how the mayor gauges it. When vehicles are parking on Horn Street and Smith Street, which is a good distance away from the primary spot for the Harvest Festival at quarter till seven in the morning, and they are still different cars parked there at 10 minutes till eight in the evening, that really made a statement to me that people were out and families were enjoying the Harvest Festival in Clayton, North Carolina. And you know, I hear the car show was supposed to be over like around 3:30 and because there were so much interest and enjoyment that even if you wanted to move your old car at 3:30, you couldn't get through the crowd to be able to do that. And I just think it says a lot for what we offer in town of Clayton. And you know, I know that, you know, it's, it's a lot of people, it's a lot of traffic, but it's a good time and it really shows the spirit in the community of town of Clayton. So I'm extremely appreciative for that. All right. And if there's nothing else that needs to come before us, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And most, and opposed like sign, and motion carries. We'll ask that you clear the room so we can have a closed session. And motion and opposed like sign and motion carries. We ask that you clear the room so we can have a closed session.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else that needs...
Sorry, is there anything else that needs to come before this board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.